That's okay. Please stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Pastor Hunter Hickman here anywhere? I don't see him. Join me in a moment of silence if you will. Thank you, please be seated. Roll call, council members.
Ms. Alt, yes. Mr. Botkins?
Here.
Ms. Earleston?
Here.
Dr. Goldman? Mr. Ivey?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Triplet?
Here.
Okay, six of the seven are here. Would like to have a motion to excuse Dr. Felner for the evening. Okay, Mr. Triplet made the motion, seconded by Mr. Botkins. All in favor, say aye. Opposed likewise, Dr. Felner hereby excused for the evening. Now, roll call elected officials and Safety Service Director.
Mayor Larry?
Here.
Attorney Valden here?
Here.
Law Director Palmer?
Here.
Treasurer Sparks?
Here.
Safety Service Director Moore?
Here.
Thank you. You've all had a copy of the minutes of the July 27th regular council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Mr. Ivey made the motion, seconded by Mr. Botkins. Any additions or corrections? If none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed likewise, minutes of the July 27th meeting hereby approved. We do have four additions to the agenda tonight. First one is ordinance 2021-69. Do I hear a motion to add that to the agenda? Mr. Richards made the motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Ivey seconded, roll call.
Ms. Alt? Yes. Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2021-69 is passed by a six and oh vote. Next is ordinance 2021-70. Have a motion to add that to the agenda? Okay, Ms. Alt made the motion. Mrs. Ivey seconded, or Mrs. Earleston seconded. Roll call.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2021-70 has been added to the agenda by a six and oh vote. Next is ordinance 2021-71. Have a motion to add that to the agenda? Okay, Mr. Ivey made the motion, seconded by Mr. Richards, roll call.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2021-71 has been added to the agenda by a six and oh vote. The last was ordinance 2021-72. Do I hear a motion to add that to the agenda? Ms. Alt made the motion, seconded by Mr. Ivey, roll call.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2021-71 has been added to the agenda by a six and oh vote. And I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Mr. Ivey made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Earleston. Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed likewise, the agenda has been amended by now's vote. Okay, next, we have the swearing in of the police officers. Mayor?
Thanks, Colonel. Earlier today, I did my second favorite thing as mayor, which is marrying people. I didn't get confused. I just swear in earlier today, we're marrying people, so there's no panic. Anyways, I really enjoy doing this. I want you to please stand. We'll, um, each one of you, raise your right hand, and then, as I say, aye for your name, and then just do a repeat after me, okay? All right, then we'll sign you in, and then most of the people are here to see you. It's a big event, so everyone makes some pictures. Really a cool thing, so, all right. Okay, that's up. Oh, I'm gonna call up, so maybe you can do. But anyways, you ready?
Ready.
Okay, aye?
Aye.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States?
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
In the state of Ohio?
In the state of Ohio.
And I will obey the laws thereof?
And that will obey the laws thereof.
And that I will, in all respects?
And that I will, in all respects.
Uphold and enforce the provisions of the ordinances of the city of Galleon, Ohio. Uphold and enforce?
Uphold and enforce.
The provisions?
The provisions.
Of the ordinances?
Of the ordinances.
Of the city of Galleon, Ohio?
Of the city of Galleon, Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer?
And will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
So, we're just really excited to have Brooklyn and John join our department. They're gonna complement the department, bringing us to full staff in about, probably about another four weeks. They have 14 weeks of training. They've been started, and couldn't be more pleased. We're getting a lot of good feedback from their field training officers, just showing a lot of enthusiasm and commitment to the job. Just heard it today with a couple of you guys, so I couldn't be more pleased. You know, showing up early to work, they already have their cruisers ready to go, dressed, and they seem very committed to the job, so just really excited to have guys on board and look forward to the next few weeks.
Thank you. Yep, absolutely. Congratulations.
Hey, Galleon is really, continues to be lucky. They were selected, there's another person who wasn't able to be here tonight, a third officer. They were selected from a pool of people. So you read about, you know, trouble finding police officers. Here in Galleon, we have, you know, we're happy to have new people come on board and wanna work with us, and so, you know, welcome aboard. Thanks a lot. You need to sign off along with the chief, and then we'll let Mr. Watt proceed. All right, y'all, sign off. Thank you, I got your pen.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Anyone wanna take pictures? This'll be the time. The header of your badges. The other thing is, these folks were in civvies the last time I saw them, so they've got their uniforms, and that's pretty awesome, so. Do we have badges with them?
Ah, yes, yes, we do.
That's his family number, he's got your jersey.
I thought I was gonna have to wait to see him. Yes. Okay, let's go first.
How about that? Maybe we have two of our lieutenants here today, I wanted to recognize Joe Sanada and John Bourne, so.
Lieutenant Sanada's actually in charge of day shift, and that's the shift that Portland is currently assigned to. Lieutenant Bourne's in charge of afternoon shift, and that's where John's currently assigned to, so they're kinda responsible for overseeing the program and making sure they're getting out there and learning the job.
All right, Wallace, back. Right, John? Enough of this celebrating. Thank you very much. Anyone that is here tonight, wanna recognize them. See ya, Brooklyn. Thank you.
Well, gentlemen, I'd like to speak tonight, but we're gonna wait until the ordinance come up because it's regarding to one of the ordinances we have, so I asked Mr. Basset to hold off. Okay, moving on. Ordinance 2021-66 is the second reading.
Orders number 2021-66, entitled ordinance number 2013-53, establishing salary orders and fringe benefits for the mayor, attorney of procedure, law director, and president of council for returns of office beginning at the earliest time allowed by law and declaring irrevocable.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion. Mr. Ivey?
Yeah, Mr. President, Dr. Felner has requested that we send 2021-66 back to committee for further consideration and discussion.
Him?
Like to make a motion.
Okay, okay, we have a motion by Mr. Ivey, seconded by Mrs. Earleston. Discussion? If none, roll call.
I didn't even hear the motion.
Yeah. It's real hard, sorry.
She'll read the motion back, okay?
Mr. Ivey requested, made a motion that the ordinance be sent back to committee for further consideration. Is that, is that the finance committee?
Yes.
And Ms. Earleston seconded.
Was there any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Okay, it passed by a six and oh vote. Moving on to ordinance 2021-69, it's the first reading.
Ordinance number 2021-69, entitled ordinance enacted chapter 730 of the city of Galleon qualified ordinance.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion. Who'd like to lead this?
Uh, Mr. President, this came through law ordinances, uh, and I'm going to kinda help that Mr. Palmer will chime in a little bit with this, uh, but this is essentially a, uh, consideration of what is currently, we really don't have any, uh, for lack of a term, ordinance on the books as it relates to food service trucks, vehicles, um, the, sorry for my voice, folks, um, but the concern is that while in times past it has been, uh, we've had some, uh, folks out doing that, but as time has progressed, we've become, there's more and more individuals that are doing this and is looking for, uh, a, uh, something to, uh, help the community. So, that's one of the reasons why this was brought forward. Um, actually, I'm gonna ask, uh, Ms. Ward, if she would be so kind to, but I don't say anything.
Okay, Mr. Basset.
I think this came back around most recently because of a request he had for someone to set a cart up in the park, and I think the question just came up, do we permit this on city property, and so have their rules to govern the border, how long, anything without being kept. That's why it came back up again. I think we first discussed it a couple of years ago, as food trucks became more regular for currents in the city, but, um, I think the bottom line is just, um, if we permit them on city property under any regulations that should be in place to make an operating city, for instance, causing foot traffic or things.
Okay.
I had a conversation with the superintendent of the district of chief of affairs, and she had a couple of questions for some of the definitions of enforcement, as well as definitions for catering and private events. So, that was one thing that, um, I guess needed a whole clarification in the language of the ordinance, whenever we talked about it. And when we talked about it in committee, um, we were talking about a private event kinda being something that we had, but sometimes at our house, and we, food could be allowed to come in and dedicate that event, um, for a private party, but it seems like there's some of the language in the ordinance, we need a little bit further definition.
Maybe at this time, Mr. Basset, would you like to address the council? Stand at the other table here, or address the council if you will, okay? Give your name and address, okay?
Hi, my name's John Basset. Do you want my home address or business address? Business address is 123 Harding Way, East Galleon. I'm one of the owners of 1803 Brewery and Taproom. Along with me are my partners in ownership of that, that business tonight. We have over $100,000 invested into 1803 Brewery and Taproom at this point in time. We're limited somewhat on space, and expansion really isn't as much of an option for us, and food trucks that we have out in front help offset some of that. We chose to make beer instead of a food, instead of a full kitchen as a result of being another manufacturer of alcohol in, in town, that's the federal, um, rule regarding that. Food trucks that we bring in, they have, they have choices, and they may choose other locations if they have to go through what they would consider to be excessive permits and things that they don't have to do in other locations. Our revenue is about forty-six, 42.6% higher when we have a food truck versus when we do not, and 100% of that is returned to the community in the form of hiring people, wages, and all of that, because we're a growing business, and we feel that that's the best way for us to build things up. We ask the council to consider further discussion on the potential options to solve whatever issues Galleon is looking into, and thank you for giving us our five minutes to talk.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions, comments from the council? Mr. Ivey?
Mr. Ward had alluded to a food vendor that wanted to set up a city parking on city property. How does that differentiate from a food truck setting up on the street in front of one of the restaurants or the UTE or the Taproom?
That's the question, Aaron. Are, are the ordinance, they schedule specifically such that you cannot take profit off of food trucks that are running through the food truck? So, that's the question, is there, is there a difference? Does that need to be spelled out? That's, that's why Ms. Alt came out, and I said, by allowing them to set up, uh, an ice cream truck. Whatever the situation is, is it one and the same? And that's all.
So, are you saying that at this moment in time that it is not permissible by previous city ordinances for a food truck to make profit off of, uh, food truck design?
We don't have ordinances for food trucks at all, and that's like many of our ordinances with years and different times. We've, you know, food trucks are just, for lives and five to seven years, so coming there, and I just found becoming a part of the government, so, um, we've had discussions on the side of, and, um, all the topics involved in that, so.
Uh, haven't been exceptions in the past, a few ordinance to events like the Oktoberfest and the Pilgrim's Day where food trucks are obviously on state property making a profit.
Absolutely, of course.
Ms. Alt?
Mr. Palmer, whenever we were looking at this language in the law ordinances committee, we got a lot of it from other cities that have similar ordinances to kind of govern these things and set fees, so, um, I don't know if this would cause a lot of undue hardship to go through and get the permit, um, to do it. It's, I think it definitely deserves discussion, but I think we're in my current environment, but I think when we were talking about it in committee, it was just to kinda keep track of things, where, and we showed they're following, like staying out of the sidewalk, stop parking on the corner, and all that.
Right.
Mr. Richards, and members of council, there were, this is the discussion for two months in, in law ordinances committee, and there were suggestive changes to the wording. Those changes were suggested, and we and I made those changes in here. Kara's right, it just was originally an ordinance from another community, in that case typical. But those changes, one in fact relating to a registration fee or a permit fee, were designed to make it an easier process for the food trucks to do this. One thing that is possible is, um, is to look at other communities to see if there is, if there are unmodeled out there, assuming this just gets a first reading tonight, that is something that you would have an opportunity to do.
I was just gonna piggyback on, uh, Mr. Palmer, um, the, the idea for this ordinance, in a sense related to the food trucks is, as I mentioned before, is, um, while we really didn't have a lot of activity, if that's the term to use, uh, in this, we are having quite a few more individuals that are interested in doing, um, ice park, we've had a request, I understand, for out here at East Park, um, the food truck uptown, obviously, and it's, it's not to hinder anybody, it just is, uh, the committee felt that it was a needed, uh, process that we wanted to, um, come up with a ordinance that encompassed many of the things that other communities had, uh, experienced, with some of the changes we had looked at and decided that we needed to change, but that's the reason why we brought it to council and to the general public, to get input on where we would like to go with this as far as, as the final product. There's no desire whatsoever in my mind to, um, do anything beyond this is the first, and beyond what, in my opinion, is to do all the way to the third reading ordinance. So, um, if, so if anybody has any other thing, and I'm sorry.
Ms. Earleston?
Could you, um, could you mind, like, exactly what, what the languages are, what, what actual parts of the, the ordinance that kind of raised concerns for you, or?
Couple of the wording was, you know, the provisional permits, many of the food trucks, um, in order, in order to have, have to have a license, they have to have food service license, are already subject to rather intense inspections that are now under control by local health departments with state regulations, and they get, they get fined, they get posted in the, um, in the newspaper on their violations, it's for permit fees, we have heard of other places that this goes on. We, we do struggle to find vendors that want to come here, but we've got one, Miss Reagan, I called the Hurky Lobster. They've got plenty of choices in this state. They go to Michigan and all other states, and getting them took nine months. So, if we have to go through the registration process with them, we won't get them. So, that's, it, it's really, you know, if there's something we could do to register for them, that would help, get their paperwork, but if they have to do it, pay the fees, the problem. Do you have a couple other? I think we've covered everything, John.
Back in the back.
So, I asked other executives, they just implemented a very similar ordinance, and I asked their chamber of commerce director how it affected their ordinance. She said they went from having nine food trucks at their first Thursday event to four, because their food trucks were like, we're not, we have other cities, we have other towns, we can go somewhere else where it's not so restrictive. We have two food trucks as members, one being our homemade ice cream, so I did talk to Jenny Lynn, and her question was, in reading the ordinance, does it mean that she has to come up to the city every two months to get a new permit? And if so, does that mean she has to then drive her food truck from where she's located all the way over here to be inspected every two months, to drive back home, and then come back a week later to set up to sell? She compared it to having an RV and having to take it to the campsite to be inspected before she comes back the next week to set up for that. She said, you know, they might do it once, they might try twice, she goes, like, if we have to continue to do that, she said, there's too many hoops to ju, jump through in there, other communities that would welcome them in, um, with open arms. In reading the food truck ordinance myself, I had a question about what, what defines a private event? Like, am I allowed to get a food truck and set up side of the chamber and call it a private event, but let people off the street come in and purchase, you know, or is it just for my specific people? Another thing in the ordinance is there's two different definitions or words used. There's an enforcement agent and enforcement officer. Are we gonna define that? That should be defined in the ordinance before it ever goes through, because who's going to be this agent or this officer? And then, the other question from my other food truck member was, so you're telling me I have to go every two months to the fire department to be inspected? How often are your brick and mortars inspected by the fire department? So, how often are your other restaurants and food establishments inspected? Every two months, doesn't, I mean, I think it's once a year they have to come through, um, and do that. So, as written, it, it, I think it needs back to committee for more clarification and more things. Like, a once a year permit where they come in and they give your license and you say, you know, you gave the fee, they don't mind, but every two months to have to drive your food truck to be inspected, because some of them, I don't know where wicked monsters from, but they're not gonna drive down here a week ahead of time to be inspected, so they drive back home to come back for next week. So, um, just some more clarification and some more ease of use for a city our size.
Thank you, Miranda. Other, Law Director Palmer?
Just for clarification, there is no requirement under the current ordinance as you have it before you, that they drive your food truck to the city every two months. The inspection for the food truck is once every year, the permit is every two months. A permit can be obtained without actually bringing the truck here, according to the words of the ordinance as it says. Now, again, this can be tweaked and changed in multiple, multiple ways, but currently that is not the case in terms of what's being proposed.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Other questions?
I'm reading that, uh, says 25, uh, for up to two months, permit, oh, maximum of 100 per year, so can I get a year permit for 100 bucks? Is that the question? That's the way I'm reading.
Again, it's whatever they want to put in there.
I'm reading the ordinance, is that what you, is that what is initially?
I would say yes, um, but, um, and, um, that's a very good point. Um, one of the things I wanted to point out to everybody is, um, the committee, like, um, um, I'm just gonna clear my name, sorry. Our safety service director, uh, did say that we had talked about this for a couple of months. Unfortunately, we did not get this type of input at that time, to be quite honest. So, uh, Unfortunately, we did not get this type of input at that time, to be quite honest. So this is stuff that we not even to know, to how to approach it, because again, it's a situation where we're trying to, we're not, we're not trying to necessarily restrict anything, but then again, we also need to protect the public, the general in our community from, and nothing against the folks that are here, but we all know that there's, there's folks out there that are not as, as community minded or as, as responsible as others are. And to his point is, he, there is a license that the, that they're required to have, there is a license, and as well as inspections and everything. I don't, I'm going to ask my, my other members of the committee, should we send this back and have a further discussion? Hopefully, it was more input.
I think we should.
Go back to committee. Okay. And with that, I'll make a motion that we send this back to committee for further discussion.
Okay, we read the motion by Mr. Richards, send it back to committee, second by Mr. Tripplett. Discussion?
I just want to clarify, if you were, just to introduce this conversation, the administration, either the service director or the mayor, is in favor of doing anything. Not to be a smart addict, but this is a sleeping dog issue. I want to say kind of jokingly, that next time it's going to be licensing cats. I mean, this is, there's no problem. They're all licensed. I really don't know what we hope to gain. There's certainly the fee that some people are concerned about. It's going to cost us more to collect and maintain records on the fee than the fee is going to generate for us. Sleeping dog issue, we're not, you know, component of it, and I didn't want people, as this goes back to committee, thinking that this is an initiative that we have anything other than trying to move it along. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Botkins?
I wouldn't be opposed to letting the food trucks come in if they would pay the same fee I have to pay at my business, three hundred, almost $400 a year for a food license for one year. That'd be fine. I think it's fair to fair. One business pays that, all should pay. I'm closed for a month a year. You've got to remember, you're on my side.
But you're opening inside of the year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I personally would love to see many options, be able to come up town on a Friday night and walk the city streets and have options, of having multiple food trucks, and removing as many barriers as we possibly can to walk into the community.
Well, I've had one person call me only one time, they couldn't get around the food truck in a wheelchair, the person they were pushing down the ground, the light, across the street, and go that direction. But I haven't heard anything since of that. I mean, somebody took care of that. But, you know, we already don't have a big, wide streets, that's the problem. So, a lot of things to think about. Thank you.
Miranda?
Can you respond to that, Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
They do, they do pay about the same amount, I think it's almost, they might be more for the licenser fee, the state.
Well, if we did it one year at a time, wouldn't it be easier for them not to have to come back? Go on, say.
Yeah. But I mean, they pay that same food licenser fee you do, they just pay it to the state instead of to the local.
Well, I didn't know that. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Other discussion? There's a motion on the floor here.
I'd like to add one more thing before we all for the motion, is that, yes, I'm in favor of Mr. Ivey's comment, I support that. We're not interested in putting up robots. We want to see people come to the community, businesses come to the community. That's not the intent of this at all, so that's all I'll say.
Okay, that's all the discussion? Okay, let's have roll call on the motion.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Tripplett?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed by six and O vote. Okay, moving on to ordinance 2021-70, it's the first reading.
Ordinance number 2021-70, how the ordinance in that thing is this chapter 730, it's supposed to be chapter 569 until the new amendment of the City of Galleon classified ordinance.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, do we have a discussion?
It's supposed to be 567 until now.
Yeah, until I just said, yeah.
So 569.
Oh, 567, okay.
Let me, let's, let's take here one thing at a time. I'd like to make a motion to amend this to chapter 567.
Okay, motion by Mr. Richards, second by Mrs. Earleston. Discussion on the amendment? Done roll call? Roll call?
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Tripplett?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ordinance passed six and O. Okay, no discussion on the ordinance.
This, this is also, this is a, we had a discussion about this in law ordinances, to, to some verb agents, some other things involved. We, that's why it was had to be added to the agenda for tonight. I'm going to, I think that one of the members here has a concern about this, and I think there's other members that also have concern. This is just an update, for lack of a better term, our current, what we have on the books already to meet, more what the current, the current atmosphere, I guess is the term, would be in turn. I'm going to ask Mr. Palmer to kindly help me out here a little bit, because...
Well, okay. What you have before you is an ordinance which would create three new areas of law for the City of Galleon in which discrimination would be prohibited. You will be considering next another ordinance which deals with another area of, of operation, which would be housing. In that case, there is currently a housing discrimination ordinance in the City of Galleon, and it has been for a long time. And so that would be just an amendment. But for this one, this would be, as you see in front of you, prohibited acts of discrimination relating to employment, relating to educational institutions, and relating to business establishments slash public accommodations. You will also see in here that there is an entire section, 562706, that is proposed, that would create exceptions to everything that would be foregoing in that ordinance. But what this basically does in a nutshell is it provides protection against discrimination for classes of individual who do not currently have protection against discrimination under Galleon classified ordinances. There are several other Ohio cities which have adopted these types of ordinances to provide equal opportunity, typically referred to as an equal opportunity ordinance. And that is what you have before you now. So it would be to add these protections in these three areas that I mentioned, employment, educational institutions, and public accommodations.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. They also have anything? Ms. Al?
I just want to say that, as a committee, we had a lot of discussion on this ordinance, and I think we've had a lot of discussion throughout the community, recently about ordinance, and now we're just working at it as my, like Mr. Palmer, so just kind of leveling the tone with the other folks who want to live here, or, you know, maybe work here, or attend school here, just that they will be protected and have the same kind of opportunities that every other person has, regardless of their protected class. So I think that this is something that we can move down and forward, and looking at giving us a more inclusive place, and I think it would definitely help out a lot of aspects of, you know, how we're moving on with the times and kind of making changes to just be more inclusive.
Any other comments? Don't have any. This is the first reading. If you want to consider this first reading and move on to the next time, second reading? Okay? Okay, consider that done. Ordinance 2021-71, first reading also?
Ordinance number 2021-71, we have the ordinance, I'm reading section 515.02 of the City of Galleon classified ordinances.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion? Who wants to take this one? Mr. Richards?
Yeah, this is another discussion item in law ordinances, as Mr. Palmer indicated, it's a, I'm a companion to the first, earlier ordinance, and as Ms. Al indicated, it's a trying to be inclusive to make a statement that you're coming to a Galleon, there is equal opportunity in our community.
Okay. Anything else? What did you have?
No.
Okay, done. Okay. Other discussion?
Someone mentioned it's anti, from my perspective, this is a pair of anti-discrimination ordinances. They're not in any way, really has, it's sidetracked in some of the language that some people may find objectionable. Like, this really is about not discriminating. This isn't an endorsement of anything. It's, it's extending protection against discrimination to certain groups that don't have that now. And so it's, in that sense, I think it needs to establish as an anti-discrimination, lots of sort of advocacy for a point of view. So I think people who are uncomfortable with it should focus in on the discrimination and less make them a positive statement about that, so.
Thank you. Other discussion? Ms. Earleston?
If there's no more discussion, going off of just what we were saying, this is literally an amendment to not discriminate in our city. I would like to make a motion to move this to a final reading.
Yeah? Ms. Al? Second? Okay. Motion by Ms. Earleston, second by Ms. Al. Other discussions? Roll call?
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Abstaining.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Abstaining.
I'm not too sure how all this voted. Was everybody A's? Yes, and abstention? Everybody else was A's?
There was two, there was two abstentions.
Two abstentions.
And four.
Four, and S's, okay. So it passes, okay?
It does not.
No, it would not.
Oh, that's right, because it's spread the world. It has to be five.
No, all things.
Okay, all six in this case, okay.
May I question the reasons for the abstention?
Okay, the motion went down.
No, he's, he's talking.
Oh, excuse me.
You can hear him.
I just wanted to ask, because it is not typical that council people are abstaining unless there's a reason, conflict of interest. You know, there's a number of reasons why that might be. Is it simply because of the lack of reserved vote on a particular issue? I feel that we need more discussion, not about the discrimination aspect, because no group of people should be discriminated against. But as I mentioned in this all a few times on the telephone, my concern is solely around gender identity and perceived gender, believing that there is male and female, and then working off of that.
That's great.
Just an umbrella of adding the LGBTQ community to the current ordinance that we have, I support it with no problem.
Okay. So that's basically an abstention, but basically a no, you don't want, you want more discussion if you say so. Okay, okay, very good.
Okay.
It has the same effect.
It has the same.
The abstention has the same effect as a no vote on the discussion.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
On the ordinance, any other discussion? Now we'll move on to another reading. Hmm?
First reading.
Pardon?
Those days of first reading.
Okay. Next, the ordinance 2021-72 is first reading.
Ordinance number 2021-72, an emergency resolution to accept the material terms of the One Ohio subdivision settlement pursuant to the One Ohio memorandum of understanding and consistent with the terms of the July 21st, 2021 National Opioid Settlement Agreement to be filed into the ordinance.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion?
What did we dispense with 70 and 71 in that once? I don't think we touched on 71.
Yeah.
Yes, it had its first reading.
Okay, and then it was 70 that they wanted to suspend the rules on?
No, there was a motion on the last one, just as I'm.
Seventy-one.
Okay, thank you very much.
So it was held to a first reading.
I imagine I was the only one confused on that. So both have been held to a first reading.
Yes.
Seventy-one failed to get the votes for suspension of the rule.
Right, right, okay.
This still has law degree.
That's okay.
Okay, ordinance 72, you've heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion?
May I do this one?
Yes.
Because I'm the one that put it before you. In the last 72 to 96 hours, we have been approached by the Ohio Municipal, in the Ohio Municipal Attorneys Association, with the final results of the National Opioid Settlement, as it pertains to the State of Ohio. This is a massive, gargantuan piece of litigation, and as is so typical of these things, they go on forever. But when it comes time to settle, it's like, okay, now here, do a quick, you know, it's one of those deals. So we have to respond on this by the 13th of this month. I will, as a result, respectfully request that council consider suspension of rules on this, or your vote will have no impact whatsoever. But this is a path by which Galleon will be able to accept the proposed settlement. I can tell you that the numbers that we have seen range from the mid-sixties in terms of 60,000 to about 88,000 in terms of what the City of Galleon will receive because of the opioid crisis. This is not with all defendants, but it's with the major defendants. And it's my strong recommendation that you approve this so that we can participate, and we can, you know, have not huge money coming in, but it's something you're going to miss out on if we don't participate.
Thank you, Ms. Earleston.
Where would the money, where would the money be used for?
It's one of those, Ms. Earleston, it's one of those Carrot's deals, we're going to find out once it's done.
So we don't know now if there's any restrictions on it, or anything like that?
I don't know, but I can only imagine that there will have to be, have to be some of the drug abuse and some of the work here. And you said, I will tell you that Galleon has an award coming to it, so it's Crawford County. Crawford County goes into the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and counties can share those revenues with cities. I don't know what Crawford County will do, but that's an opportunity too.
Other discussion? Mr. Richards?
I was going to say, if there's no other discussion, I would like to make a motion to move ordinance 2021-72 to the final reading.
Heard the motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Richards. Do you have a second? Mr. Botkins seconded it. Roll call?
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Tripplett?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Okay, it passed by six and O vote. Okay, now discussion on the ordinance itself. Mr. Richards?
To pass ordinance 2021-72.
Heard the motion by Mr. Richards, it passed this. Heard the motion by Mr. Richards, passed this ordinance, second by Mrs. Earleston. Any discussion? If none, roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Tripplett?
Yes.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2021-72 is passed by six and O vote. Moving on to other business, any committee coming up here shortly? Ms. Al?
I had a couple of individuals reach out and ask why the light was flashing on the western street.
Okay.
Does anyone know? It's not anymore.
I did hear, maybe from, heard from the same people that they like it that way, flashing, so I don't, you know, we'll kind of try that out and see how that goes. I believe, although I'm not sure, that we're beyond any kind of clawback, if you will, from ODOT, federal funds, put all of those lights in, I hope that we've outlived that, but that may be an issue if we were to take that.
That was my turn on.
Mrs. Earleston?
The Inspire Health Committee meeting will begin next Thursday, yeah, it's Thursday the 19th.
Okay, thank you. All the ordinance had their meetings already, so did utility, Parks?
Yeah, I've spoken with Mr. Richard and Mr. Botkins, if they don't have anything on the agenda, unless the mayor has any pressing, I just would like to.
Okay, good enough.
And since, since Dr. Palmer is not here, economic development will be next Tuesday at seven o'clock, and the finance committee will be open next day, Wednesday.
Yeah, finance the next night then too, okay? Mr. Botkins?
Yes, we have no issues for Thursday night either on the streets and alleys, so we're going to cancel that meeting.
Okay. That it? Any other discussion about before meeting tonight by council? If not, Auditor Bodinger?
I have nothing to say.
Hey, Treasurer Sparks?
I don't have anything to report. I'm down on one person, if I can get this off this time, I'm figuring it out, so I have no, think reconciliating or whatever. On a good note, I think I'm just having a five K run with kids to play Saturday morning, so come out and enjoy it, that, barbecue, pancake, so I have a foot on that, so that's about it.
Hey, Lord Richter Palmer?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mayor O'Leary?
I'm going to surprise people and say nothing tonight. Any questions?
What's going on with the 598? There's a lot of stakes going up, they're working out there, do you know?
We're going to identify the utility lines.
Utility lines?
We still don't have, we, ODOT still doesn't have a signed contract, so we have to step remove from that, but I don't think there's any problem.
Okay.
Yeah, that's utility identification.
Do I have anything else?
No, sir, unless there's a question.
Anybody else have a good for the order tonight? Miranda?
I just wanted to thank council and the mayor's office for allocating those CARES Act funds to the Chamber for the Small Business Relief Grants. We currently have 54 applications in the office for funding purposes, we have worked shooting for 57 to 59 and 60, so at this point, I feel like as long as they're good applications, we can fund all of those. If you know any other businesses that need to be given on a, tell them to give them to us by Thursday, and our board of directors meets Thursday, so we're going to start having those conversations moving forward.
Okay, anybody else have anything? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Tripplett made the motion, second by Mrs. Earleston, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed likewise, meeting hereby adjourned at 7:55. Thank you for coming, everybody.